Yeah. I now call the meeting of the town on property evaluation committee to order at five oh four P M. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Uh, we will roll call. We'll go ahead and introduce ourselves so everybody knows who we are. Uh, if you want to start down there, we'll be, these mics are not us. We'll be, we'll be our other people around.
Uh, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services.
Paige Bronk, Economic and Community Development Manager.
Uh, Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works.
Deb Jones, Assistant Director of Planning and Development.
John Burt, Town Manager.
Dee Morrison, Director of Finance.
Mary Dunn, Chair Conservation Commission.
Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Bob Morris, Chairman of the Economic Development Commission.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. I really appreciate the great fantastic turnout. Um, Calendar and Communications, I did receive several letters of comments. Those have been posted on our website with the agenda in the calendar. Um, I will mention those during public after the end of public comment, and they will be filed and on record for everyone. And anybody else have any communications? Okay. Uh, minutes of October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, I would say, uh, if you've had a chance to review, I'd entertain a motion. Anybody?
Motion to approve.
Motion, done, right?
Second.
Second by Greg Hanover. Uh, it needs, we have a first and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, same side. Here is a nine zero. Moving on to a new business, before we go into the public comment, just like to quickly go over the town's process, it's a newer process for evaluating and selling properties. Uh, this, of course, is the very first stage, the, uh, our TOE committee, Town Own Property Evaluation Committee. We're tasked with, this is mostly town staff level at this point, other than we have two additions. Um, but it's mostly an internal process, but before we even get, we've, there's never been discussion by the town really on S B Butler's future. So early on in the process, we really wanted to see what people were thinking and get the input. So we really value everyone being here. Part of what we do is, is, uh, answer, we, we in terms of among our committee members for each property, look at, um, what's current use of property? Um, does it currently support municipal function or could it in the foreseeable future? Is it suitable for active recreation or open space? Is it suitable, does it have suitable road or drainage improvements? Will significant, significant economic development opportunities be generated by development? And will the town be relieved any potential liabilities or costs of maintaining the property? As part of this process, we also, uh, we also have the town attorney have look at any title restrictions, constraints on the property. Um, as part of that, see if there's any reason you couldn't legally sell the property. We look at, uh, has there been a phase one done on it? We get, we, part of the process requires an appraisal, so that type of thing. At the end of this process, the committee will make a recommendation to the town council. That could be to sell the whole property, keep the whole property, is open space parks, just split the property, whatever it is. That recommendation will go to the town council. At that point, they would, uh, send a referral for one thing to the planning zoning commission for them to weigh in on that. The town council will hold an official, um, public hearing to gather comments, part of making decision. And then, uh, if they decide to move forward, they, uh, they will form a secondary committee, uh, the, uh, Property Sale Review Committee. Um, town staff would create an RFP in conjunction with that committee. That committee would put out the RFP with, uh, input from the town council, RTM planning zoning on that RFP. They would evaluate the RFPs that come back and recommend, make a recommendation to the town council on potentially preferred developer, if that was the route. Town council would again hold another public hearing, so yet another chance to give input, uh, when you know more about what the actual project would potentially be, if there is a project. Um, and if, oh, then at that point, if they do move forward, their team would also have to approve the sale of the property, if that's the direction. So quite a lot of steps, but I find this to be one of the most important to get input right at the beginning. So thank you again for being here. When you come up to the days to speak, please make sure you speak into the microphone, uh, state your name and address. Uh, you have three minutes, and please keep your comments focused on the future uses of S B Butler. Uh, and first on the list so far, I have Tom Olson.
Uh, Tom Olson, uh, one eighty Crosswinds Drive. I'm also a member of the Conservation Commission. In reviewing the, uh, inputs that you received, uh, that were posted this afternoon, uh, I noted the, uh, uh, Groton Housing Authority. And, uh, this letter that Mr. Frink submitted, I fully support, and that's, uh, it addresses everything that I would have said. I think you, uh, as a town, we need to be taking a look at, at what the affordable housing options are. Uh, putting it with the Groton Housing Authority will progress that. Groton Housing Authority, if I, just for, um, uh, your historical purposes here, uh, made a request for the no egg school. Uh, uh, and, uh, they were very late to the ballgame per se, as far as for public inputs and everything else. There was a lot of decisions have been made before, uh, the, uh, Groton Housing Authority got to put their two cents in. And I think they're coming in at the earliest point here, and I think they need to be highly considered, uh, as you move forward, uh, in, in your efforts here. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the list, I have Stephen, uh, Stephen McGuire.
Stephen McGuire, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, and forty-six Ocean View Avenue. This house has been in my wife's family since it was built in nineteen fifty-two. A year before S B Butler, Sylvester Benjamin Butler School was built. School, the very school she went to, along with thousands of neighborhood children. S B Butler was the center and soul of the neighborhood. It was the pride of the neighborhood. It made the neighborhood what it is, and then it closed. Last year, while taking my morning walk, I noticed a flock of turkey vultures that had taken up residence in the now deserted school. Do you know what a flock of turkey vultures flying around is called? Committee. And I don't make this stuff up. And when they're hanging around having a meal, it's called a wake. How appropriate. This property is owned RS twelve. So with no hanky panky by using overlay districts or special exceptions, even the most creative developer could get fifteen plus lots out of this parcel. And speaking about special exceptions, never will the neighborhood go around, go along with one hundred cottages being placed on this nine point three acre property. After closing the heart and soul of this neighborhood, are fifteen new housing units, housing units the answer? No, and certainly not one hundred cottages. I think the town should restore and rejuvenate this parcel by making it the S B Butler Park and Recreation Area. So that once again, we have something that binds us together. I hope my story about seeing the turkey vultures does not intern to a metaphor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I have, uh, Steve Kenyac. Sorry if I messed the names up.
Uh, thank you. I don't have such well-prepared remarks. I'm Steve Kenyac, one seventeen Ocean Avenue, Mystic. Uh, spent a lot of time in this room years ago, uh, used to work with you folks, uh, from the RTM side. Uh, sorry. I'm a little tall, the microphone's a little short, and I have a bad back. Um, I just want to talk to the neighborhood a little bit. I, I moved into the neighborhood back in nineteen eighty-one. On one of the side streets left, lived in a big house in a big neighborhood and came back, uh, downsized, love the neighborhood, love the people. Obviously, we have a very tight neighborhood. Everybody, everybody knows everybody, everybody takes care of everybody. So as you, as you consider your options, and, you know, I'd like to see open space. I'd like to see potentially a pre-K or some good use of the old building. I'm an engineer. I hate to see buildings torn down. Um, but I, I want you to be very aware of the neighborhood and, and the neighborhood community and not do something that's going to tear the neighborhood, uh, into something different than it is. A lot of people don't know, but the neighborhood is a bit famous in the architectural world, not unlike Mystic West Main Street. Um, there's a number of Sears Kit Houses that are in original condition on that road, and we've had a number of architecture students actually come through and survey our homes. So it's a, it's a neighborhood with some interesting history that is sort of under the radar, and we like, we kind of like it that way. Um, poor choices could lead to trouble for the neighborhood. The street is a little narrow, leading into the area. Uh, I personally had to get engaged with the fire department because we used to have, uh, school events, and the, the fire trucks could not get down the road as people park on both sides of the road. Because there are generally sixty by a hundred lots, many people park on the street. And if you're going to consider any kind of a volume of traffic being added to the road that feeds into that property, you're going to have to think about that really hard. And I got to tell you, I've already lost a piece of property to the town for streets. I'd, I'd hate to lose another piece of property if you try to widen that street out. Um, I think I'm kind of running up on my time. I just want to, uh, volunteer my services if you need a rep for the community, um, and I spoke to the town manager as a possibility of, uh, joining your committee. Thank you very much, Steve Kenyon.
Thank you very much. Next, I have, uh, Bill Sweeney. Sign up, is online. Uh, yeah, magic. Bill, uh, go ahead.
Can you hear, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much for allowing me to participate remotely. Uh, I'm here tonight. My name is Bill Sweeney. I'm an attorney with Tobin Carberry over in New London. I represent a community-based developer who's, um, interested in the S B Butler School. I want to thank the committee for the time, uh, this evening, particularly the opportunity to address you. Uh, the S B Butler, uh, uh, school, from my client's perspective, presents a terrific redevelopment opportunity, uh, for Groton and, and perhaps a redevelopment opportunity that doesn't necessarily include housing, which I think a lot of people are, are concerned about as a potential reuse. Uh, um, you know, my client believes that the school has a high potential for adaptive reuse, a way to save the building and keep it, and, and really use it in an innovative manner, one that would have open space as a component, and one that would also make sure that it was consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and respect, uh, the, the fabric of that neighborhood. Um, my clients would support the decision of the committee to approve the property for disposition and disposal through an RFP process, which we would hope to participate in, uh, in the coming months. Um, one point that I think, um, that I think is really important, um, that I'd like to just leave you with is, um, I appreciate the enhanced and refined process that the committee has adopted for the disposition of parcels. Um, certainly, the thoroughness that you are showing, the transparency you're showing is important. But I also want to just remind you about the issue of time and, and sort of to borrow from one of the previous speakers. Um, to the extent that the committee can remove obstacles and red tape from the process, uh, I think is incredibly important. Every day that ticks by, uh, is a day that the building sits vacant. Uh, I've worked on a lot of adaptive reuse projects, including the Colonel Ledger School, which is being redeveloped by one of my clients. Um, these buildings do fall into disrepair, and the costs to restore them, um, continue to increase as time passes. We also have seen in the last year how a change in interest rates, um, just in on, in the, in the national economy can have a dramatic impact on the ability to finance redevelopment and adaptive reuse projects. So, um, do your due diligence, be thorough. We hope this does get to an RFP process where people can be creative and go and work with the neighborhood to come up with creative reuse plans. Um, but also remember, remember that tension that we do need to move forward in a timely manner, because if we wait too long, there may not be much left to save at the end of the day. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Representative Andre Baumgartner.
Good evening, everyone. Representative Andre Baumgartner, uh, representing the forty-first district, um, address one sixty-two Daniel Brown Drive in Mystic. Uh, just want to thank the community for having a, uh, brilliant showing tonight. Uh, this is precisely, uh, the type of action, the type of participation we need from the public, uh, when making critical decisions regarding our public spaces, our open spaces, our former schools. Um, without the public, without the informed constituency, um, your elected leaders, your town officials cannot make the informed decisions on your behalf. And so, um, I'm not here to share my ideas for the property. Um, I'm here just to, uh, to just remind each and every, um, um, resident of this community to participate in this process. This is one of many meetings that will be held. Um, once, uh, the town, uh, ultimately does, uh, decide on a use, there will be, uh, at least two public comment periods provided by the town council. Um, but this is obviously just a first step. Um, uh, selfishly, I'm, I'm one who, uh, and absolutely loves, uh, our open spaces here in our community. Uh, certainly are, uh, with active, active, uh, in, um, recreational, uh, spaces, um, whether it's forested spaces or, uh, sports fields. And as many of you, uh, neighbors, um, know on overlook, so many children utilize, um, you, uh, so many children utilize that space, uh, for, uh, after-school activities, uh, during the weekends, uh, folks walk around. And so I, I think it's absolutely critical that a large component of those, uh, uh, current open spaces are held in the public trust in perpetuity, um, when considering, uh, redeveloping that site, uh, specifically the school site. Um, but again, um, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out. It's so critically important you participate in this process, and, um, uh, thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next up is Lauren Gothier.
Lauren Gothier, thirty-one Boardsen Road, Groton. Um, I'd like to echo Representative Baumgartner's comments about the showing tonight as a member of the Property Reuse Committee. This is exactly the type of community engagement that we were hoping for with the development of the TOE committee. So thank you all deeply for coming out, and I can say I only wish that the other two properties that the TOE Commission had elevated to RFP already had the same opportunity. And so I appreciate the TOE at least giving this community a chance to comment. I think Mystic's S B Butler neighborhood has a really great opportunity to serve multiple public interests in being turned into an affordable housing development. First, provides more housing for Groton, which has been a repeated need, both by staff and town counselors. And in providing affordable housing, especially in a high-demand residential neighborhood like Mystic, you give an opportunity to bring in a type of diversity that it doesn't see currently, and that the town is trying to attract in all of the different, um, engagements that the town does in displaying and marketing for Groton for development. Third, this will, of course, overall add to the town's grand list. One of the repeated gripes about the vacant school properties is that they don't add to the grand list. They don't provide taxes, and that's why we need to develop them immediately as fast as possible. And so in doing so, I, um, agree that that would help keep Groton affordable. Another thing that the town council has repeatedly said is a goal of theirs. So fourth, developing S B Butler shows that Groton is at least consistent in applying its standards of use and its espoused community needs. Pleasant Valley and Groton Heights, I'm bringing up for context, have both been sent to RFP. I'm assuming will be for a housing need despite, um, at least Pleasant Valley, that district not having any town-owned playgrounds, parks, or athletic fields. And then finally, given that S B Butler is in prime condition and in a premier location, I don't believe the town should have any problem finding a responsible developer who will be able to bring a community-supported development there that does not rely that much on, if any, tax dollars. So I know there's a consideration of the deed restriction. I would posit that if you sell it for a dollar to a developer, you're not losing much profit. Or else if you keep a community need in affordable housing or allowing the Groton Housing Authority to develop and management, you will be keeping the covenant there. And then there's also the need, obviously, for recreation in the neighborhood. I believe all neighborhoods and all of the schools should retain some kind of neighborhood recreation use. Pleasant Valley, um, it was posited, it would be appropriate for them to get a pocket playground while the rest gets turned into housing. I don't see why S B Butler cannot be considered. That could be a considered appropriate for S B Butler as well. So I do hope that everyone's comments here are taken seriously by this commission and that the previous decisions are also weighed as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have John Goodrich.
Hi, John Goodrich, thirteen fifteen River Road. And actually, for the sake of this conversation, I wanted to disclose I still control two properties of this neighborhood, which is seventy-four Irving Street and sixty Irving Street. Um, as a member of the Property Use Committee, again, I'm glad to see so many people come out. That's what we always envisioned when we said you guys should go this way. Um, couple things, I'm sure most of the residents here are going to say they want to park. And I've been on the record multiple times saying that I think all old schools should become parks. They're used by the public now. I think it's consistent. Um, I kind of find this meeting a little odd, though, because at least three of the members of this committee know, which is Mr. Burt, Mr. Dunn, and Mr. Boris. This property has restricted deed. The way it was seized by, from the owner makes it unsellable. It's actually the same problem they had with the annoying school property. So as glad that I am that you are all here, we probably could have been spent our nights differently, because selling it's going to be very difficult for the town. They would actually incur a lawsuit if they did. So, um, as I said, on the record, I do believe in open space. But as I've thought of this property, I actually have a different belief. And I'm going to tell you this, this story of my family. So my grandfather, who worked at Durham Enders, which I'm sure none of you guys here know what that is, sitting up there, didn't even graduate from high school, had to leave, his father died at a young age, who was a machinist. And thanks to war bonds and thanks to overtime during World War Two, he was able to buy a home on Irving Street. My father had to leave school always while his mother died when he was sixteen to help raise this family. My point is two blue-collar workers were able to afford a house on Irving Street and buy a second house on Irving Street, which, thanks to my parents, are now mine, and I don't know what two houses on Irving Street are worth financially. So it set me up and my, my son and his family up. It's generational wealth created by real estate. Those of us that have been in that neighborhood for a while know is, it is and has been a blue-collar neighborhood. My father was a machinist. We had neighbors that were bus drivers. Yeah, high school teachers. It was not a wealthy neighborhood. So I would challenge our town government, and I would challenge my neighbors to giving other people the same opportunity. Let's take S B Butler. Let's find a way to build housing that can be given to people in need, not given, but sold at cost, so that they too can have the benefits I got because of my thrifty and hard-working family. I think that would be best for the community, and like we said, we have a housing need anyhow. So that's what I'd like to see there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Christopher Sorrell.
Good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Christopher Sorrell. I currently reside at one five three Old Evarts Lane, which, I don't know, puts me at ground zero for this project. Um, I, I, I look at S B every day. I'm right in the middle of the school. So I see the issues here everybody has. I'm a contractor and, um, I work around town, and I also know about the need for housing. But I kind of am caught in between here, seeing such a vast piece of property here, and maybe the need for partially a park and some housing put in correctly, not slammed in by a big developer looking to make as much money as he can. Just a couple of other things real quick. My wife asked me to bring up at this meeting would be boundaries as far as the fence that currently surrounds the school. If the school is, uh, demolished, contaminants, because it is a nineteen fifties building, it could contain asbestos, lead, other things. Um, parking as to how crowded our streets are right now. Any given day, if any of you ever were to drive down Old Evarts, and this does have a, a huge effect on what happens to the school, you can hardly go down it. Every, there's so much off-street parking now. Dump trucks, school buses are having a heck of a time getting up and down the street. Um, those are some of the bigger items that I'd like to see addressed as well as to what happens. But as far as my family's concerned, we could see both park and some, um, buildings being put in that are proper and architecturally right for the neighborhood. Like to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. For those on Zoom, if you wish to speak, would you please raise your hand? Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak tonight? And we'll come back to try that one more time at the end. Do you have anyone else in the crowd who would like to come up? Oh, you have another, okay. Next up, we have Russ Nickerson.
Good evening. My name is Russ Nickerson. I was raised on eighty-one Island View Avenue, and I live in eighty Island View Avenue right now. I was a product of Butler's school. Um, my two boys went to Butler's school. Uh, my view on the town, uh, what to do with this property is understanding the costs and the liabilities that are involved with, uh, redispositioning this property. I understand both. Um, my personal view would be to, as the last gentleman said, Mr. Sorrell, uh, entertain an idea where uh, the, the southern portions of the school grounds would be converted into or remain as an open space for use for the public for, um, ball, playing basketball, baseball, chipping a golf, throwing the ball for the dog, and then tasteful implementation of homes in, say, the northern section, uh, whereby the sale of the property to a responsible developer with a moderate number of homes to go in there of like, uh, uh, consistency with the area, uh, would help to offset the raising of Butler Elementary School. And, uh, I'm not sure what the zoning, uh, stipulations would be for that. And, uh, and with regards to restricted deed, the other gentleman mentioned, but, uh, that's, that's what I would like to see. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up is Kristen Stam.
Hi, I'm Kristen Stam. I'm at one eighty-two Bayview Avenue. Um, my family's, uh, lived in the property for about thirty years, and I've got two girls that have attended both, uh, Groton Schools and S B Butler. Um, the property is of great value to the neighborhood. We have children who use that property. We'd like to see it converted to something that has maybe in a walking trail or walking track so that the kids can use it, so that our community, our elderly community, our younger community, or those that need to get exercise can have a safe place to go do so. Um, also, we've got the fields there that are great for, um, the kids and after-school activities for the spring when we've got soccer and, um, softball. That's the kids can go ahead and do. There's not a, a convenient place that has a lot of parking that would accommodate this. Um, Butler has a kitchen, so if it gets utilized the right way, the community center could, or if it's maybe converted to a community center, that kitchen could be utilized to have fundraising events with the kids are on the field doing their games. Parents could buy dinner and lunches and things like that. There's things that this building can accommodate that will enhance our neighborhood versus bringing in housing that will go ahead and make it more crowded. We have a beautiful neighborhood, and again, as other individuals have pointed out, our streets are very narrow. Adding more traffic to our neighborhood is, 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 you know, it's hard. There's times in the morning where we're waiting for people to drive through so that we can go get our kids to school. This, this property is a great resource to the neighborhood. Everyone in the neighborhood who has grown up in it or uses it, there's a need for everyone there. Um, I think that more of a community-based facility or property, open space, would be best suited for our neighborhood and our growing families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, uh, Liz, and I'm afraid I can't quite make out the last name, starts with a B, but one seventy-two Bayview.
I'm just going to share the letter that I sent in. Um, it's Liz Billick. It's one seventy-two Bayview Avenue, Mystic. Um, I've lived at one seventy-two Bayview Avenue for twenty-eight years, right down the hill from the school. Both my children attended the school, and it was fantastic to have that elementary school in a close-knit community such as ours. I was so saddened when that school closed and honestly feel that renovating it is the best solution. However, that ship has probably sailed. Um, in my opinion, the next two best possibilities would be to divide the bulk of the space into building lots where single family homes can be built to fit in with the existing neighborhood. Any other type of housing such as tiny homes, apartments, complexes, condos, townhouses and low income houses, et cetera, absolutely would detect detract from this neighborhood, along with creating traffic and noise burdens. Another possibility would be similar to Washington Park with pavilions, sports fields, walking space and law and a large fenced in park slash playground area for the kids and the families to enjoy. As it is now, I walk my granddaughter up the hill to play at the quiet playground. And when my grandson can walk, he will be walked up there too, hopefully. Please don't let this neighborhood undergo drastic changes negatively affecting our community. No parking lots for downtown Mystic with commuter buses in a residential neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Dennis Walsh.
I'm Dennis Walsh. I'm at a two thirteen Capstan. Uh, I've heard quite a bit here, which which is good, but it's some, nobody pointed out the traffic as we're affected in Mystic. We're all aware of the traffic in Mystic in the summertime. The neighborhood around Butler is like a sanctuary. Okay, we're away from all that traffic. And I would hate to see any use of that property that would bring that traffic into our neighborhood. Um, as, as mentioned by other people, it's a great neighborhood. There is a lot, a lot of children in that neighborhood. The park, I think, has more value to the neighborhood, more total value rather than just the dollars that it means to a developer. So I think we should look at the, the value to the neighborhood and I would like to think that the town would take the wishes and the needs of the neighborhood as opposed to all these other competing needs. Okay, we're the ones that live there. We're the ones that value it. And I think there's a, there's a, it's a, it's a lot of people in the neighborhood. You see how many people here tonight. I think we all value that property. I would like to see you know, a use that doesn't increase traffic, doesn't increase noise and is consistent with the neighborhood that there is now. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have Margie Gookins.
Margie Gookins, twenty six Daniel Brown Drive Mystic. Um, many of my family went to S P Butler. My grandmother lived on Ocean View Avenue where I was for many years of my life. The school is important. The property is important. Open space with all the amenities that these people have talked about would be a wonderful idea. However, look at the knowing school. Six acres that could have been sold, brought money into the town, sits idle, they've done nothing except cut the grass. That's sad. It is now a town park. We can't do anything about it. Kids do need a place to play. I have no problem with a part of that property staying as playground. However, affordable housing is necessary, especially for seniors. Ledger has a wonderful over fifty five community. Fairly decent sized places, one and two bedroom where they are maintained by the owner of the property. They would be affordable to seniors, which is needed. We are being taxed out of our homes. It's time for you to look at your entire community and think that maybe that would be a good fit for it because seniors are ninety nine percent of the time, very quiet people. Well, some of them are. Not necessarily me, but I'm just saying, I think um we're looking at a group area where you could afford to put people and where people can afford to live comfortably would be more than acceptable to me. But please, no more parks that are going to set empty and generate nothing for the taxpayers of Groton.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Maggie Favrety.
Hi, my name is Maggie Favrety. I'm the first Chair Director of the Alliance for the Mystic River Watershed. And we are an alliance that's bringing together the four towns and two tribal nations in the Mystic River Watershed and creating a resilience action plan. I'm myself, I'm an educator and community resilience specialist, having had experience working in disaster affected communities, mostly in the Western Hemisphere. And what I'm hearing here tonight is actually a beautiful expression of how our open spaces and our public spaces are appreciated by the communities that live around them and have participated in them for a long time. So this space is really a part of people's lives. So when we're thinking about what to do with it, the phrase regenerative development comes to mind. Regenerative development is that which gives back more both to the environment and to the neighborhood than it takes away. And so I'm going actually to a Connecticut Green Building Council Conference on Friday in New Haven where examples of this type of development and these types of communities where there's plenty of open space maintained, where buildings that can be saved are saved, where the function of the space is what the community has grown to love and appreciate. And where there is no threat to community well being or to environmental well being um by whatever is built there. Um, so I'm hoping to learn a lot more that I can bring back to this conversation about, I know of some examples in Connecticut where this type of development is happening um already. And so there are contractors in the state who know how to do this kind of work. And it will be up to us to continue this community, the love that this community has for this space. And the relationship that this, that people can have with wide open spaces as well as um buildings that are actually responsive to the community and to the environment. So thank you for letting me.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next. Next up, we have Bonnie Ward.
Hello, Bonnie Wardle for Conrad Street Mystic. Uh, I went to S B Butler School because I've lived in this area my whole life. Um, my preference would be for open spaces slash parks, even in open field. I appreciated open fields as a child. They don't all have to be developed with baseball fields and everything on it. But if that is not feasible, um, I would say keep the long term costs to the town low, which would mean putting part of it probably into maybe a small park or playground and the rest. Just keep it simple. Keep it RS twelve housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Bobby Joe Senior.
Hi, my name's Bobby Joe Senior. I live at three sixteen Groton Long Point Road. I'd like to thank the woman that came up and was all about affordable housing. I have a twenty four year old daughter. She's educated, college educated. She has a good job. She cannot live on this side of the bridge. She has to live in New London. Why? There's no affordable housing. She's single, lives on her own, has no children. She's a young independent woman, would like to keep it that way. She doesn't want to come over on this side of the bridge and have to have a roommate or have to have a significant other to help pay the rent. I'm all for the playing fields. I'm all for the open space. We have that. I work, I'm a school bus driver, thirty years. I work with young people coming into the area. They're not staying here. They're not living in Groton. They're living everywhere but Groton, Preston, Colchester, New London, Ledger. They're not paying rent here. They're not buying their groceries here. They're not going to Walmart here. Groton, the town of Groton needs to do something to retain the, the young people. Otherwise you're gonna lose them. My, my husband and I, we live in the house that his father built, his mother and father built in nineteen sixty, right down the road. So there's history there. My daughter went to S B Butler, my daughter went to Cutler, my daughter went to Fitch High School. There's history there. Lots of history behind me. But in order to start refreshing the area, you have to keep in the youth. And in order to do that, you need affordable housing or senior citizen housing. But, but something to keep the people here to live here, to spend their money here, or there will be no growth. And that'll be the end of town of Groton. So thank you for the three minutes.
Thank you very much. That was all I have on the sign up sheet. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak?
Um, my name is Portia Bordron, twenty four Jefferson Drive, Groton, Connecticut. For full transparency, I'm also a Groton Town Counselor, um, but I'm also a resident of Groton. I feel it was important to speak tonight as I'm not here to make decisions, but I'm here for open transparent government. One of the reasons I made this referral to commit to create something like we have before you was on, on the heels of the Mystic Royal School. And the folks in that neighborhood who felt disenfranchised and felt they didn't have a place for their voice to be heard. As a result of serving with many members, um, with my referral to the town uh mayor, which created uh these property use committee, which as a result came to this committee, is one of the things I had hoped for was open transparent government. With public speaking and folks in the community could be heard. As of yesterday, this um, meeting was not even posted on any community forums. I had asked the town manager and he did uh, put it up there. Um, and then I was able to share it on, you know, different platforms on the community. But I just wanted to let you know that first as an elected official, I'm only as good as the people in the community as yourself and your voices need to be heard. Your opinions matter and it affects your neighborhood and the tapestry. It's so important that you have the platform and the availability to come speak. As a person who grew up on um High Street and Mystic, I spent my summers and days rolling down Ocean View, running around uh up and down those neighborhoods with friends that lived over there. As we grow and we change in this community, it's important to remember the tapestry in the, in the areas that made us unique. And making sure that when we look at change, the change is in a way that's going to protect the residents who have been here for the longevity of our community and the, and the community to come. If they wanted to live in an urban area, they would have chose so. So it's important that we look at open space as a, as a big supporter of open space and park and flex uh areas. It's really important to make sure that we look at the best use for this um facility, the land and respect the voices of our neighbors. Without our neighbors' voices, what are we here for? This is a community action. These are taxpayers who have a voice. Um, so again, I stand with the neighbors in helping to make sure it's open and transparent. I'm here to listen and to see what the needs are of this community and make sure that I am a voice for our community moving forward to make sure deals that come up before us are right for Groton. Making sure that things that are going to come in are right for our environment and the safety and protection of our community. So again, I thank you for all the people who are out here. Continue to come up and speak up and I will stand with all of you and make sure together we make the right decision for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else who would like to come up to speak?
Good evening. Kevin Quinn, two two three Ocean View Avenue. Uh, I work for you and also with you. I was the building zoning official for over twenty years in the town. Um, and looking at this property, I think we can have a little bit of both. If you take the northern, uh, the, the southern end of the property that has the ball field, you have a little bit farther north, you have the basketball courts and the playground equipment. You could keep that whole southern end with the parking. That's one way in and one way out. You could take the kitty playground, which is on the northern end, bring that down to the southern end where the other playground equipment is. I bring my grandson up there. My kids play T-ball there. That leaves you a small portion at the northern end of the property that you could sell RFP, get the developer to come in. It's only going to be a limited number of lots. It's not going to be a ton of housing. It's an RS twelve zone. Um, I just think that if the school has to come down, we don't eat that cost. If we can sell some of that property to a developer, I can only imagine what the remediation cost of that building is going to be because of its age, lead, asbestos, and then the demolition itself. Uh, knowing what we went through with Noah's School, the amount of money that the town spent. Uh, and we didn't recoup any of that, at least if we sold a little piece of this property retained all that space to the south for open space recreation. Um, we offset the cost of demolition remediation and um, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I saw it end up here. Okay, anybody else who'd like to come up to speak? Is there anybody? I see one.
Hi.
Yes.
Um, my name is Richard Gibson. I live at forty two Mississippi Avenue in a house that was built in nineteen eighty two. Ever since it was moved. So we're on a forty year history in the neighborhood. But both my kids went to Butler and it was, at that point, it was a great school. I wouldn't write off. And I'm just gonna add one thing that I, I was a registered architect for almost forty years. And I did a lot of work for Groton, including on a lot of the baby boomer schools of which uh, Butler is one. We, in our firm, did about, I don't know how many I have encountered, but we probably did half dozen of the elementary schools in Groton. And uh, I wouldn't give up on the uh, S B Butler School without some more study. I think it has possibilities for adaptive reuse. I can't give a program for what it would be, but I think it would be a it'd be a great thing if this town could um put an RFP possibly either with a program or without a program that would uh allow a developer to use some imagination, maybe think outside of the box a little bit. Once this cools down, it's down. I know, I know that there are uh problems in terms of energy, in terms of possible asbestos, possible lead. Some of that's already been remediated by various renovations. But I think it may end up, I don't think it would be that expensive for the town to look for a feasibility study for reuse of the uh uh school. You can always build a housing later or decide at a later point that it's not going to work as, as an adapted uh building. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else in the audience or back by the door there?
Good evening. My name is Katie Flynn. I live at one thirty Ocean View Avenue. I'm a transplant here. I've been in the um, the military for eighteen years and I came here on purpose to retire in this neighborhood. Um, I've lived here for two years now. And I agree with a lot of my neighbors here and I hope I don't disappoint any of you because now you know where I live, but uh- I've lived here for two years now and I agree with a lot of my neighbors here and I hope I don't disappoint any of you because now you know where I live, but there's a lot of pressure. Lower field, keep as a playground, upper field, maybe a cul-de-sac of a few houses that match the exterior and the, in the facade of, of our houses. But I want to inject a little emotion here, right? Whoever is developing and whatever happens, I ask that you go at all hours of the day. Like you would be buying a house yourself. You go during the daylight, you go at night. It's the best sunset. My, my living room faces the school and it literally has the best sunset and the best view in all of the town. Right? And during the day, my two children and my dog, sometimes it's off-leash, so don't yell at me either, but we are constantly there. It has one of the great sledding hills that all of the kids in our neighborhood can walk to with their sleds. And there are snowballs. We rented a, a snow cone machine for the beginning of school and that, that truck was there serving all the kids in the, the neighborhood the night before the first day of school. These are things that, that drive people to move here. So yes, you can have all the housing in the world that's going to get you people. But you want to like, you want a community, you want a family. And what's going to get people into this community that you are obligated to build and, and, and listen to us hopefully is, is just that. You have to inject emotion. You have to have the magic and that's why we all live here. So just drive by at night, please. And then during the day, but slow down and make sure you stop at the stop sign because my kid's always like, it's, it's a big issue. I got them scooters, but they have helmets, I promise, but nobody stops. So we should talk about that too, but just please listen to us and look, it took me forty-one years to be able to afford a house like this. A single mom, active duty, it doesn't happen at a young age. This is where we all end up to raise families, to settle down, to retire. It doesn't happen in your twenties maybe. And if it does, you're lucky and maybe you're at Groton Long Point, living your high life. Good for you. But please just take that, that part of it too. It took us a long time to get here and those of us that weren't fortunate enough to be raised here. That's why we want to stay. I will leave you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to speak?
Hi, Jim Gustafson, sixty-one Algonquin Drive. I went to Butler in the early eighties. I would be in favor of, you know, open space, park-like type thing. I guess I could probably support, like a few speakers ago, I mentioned maybe a couple of houses I went in, but I think it's a valuable asset for like future generations of children that might move into the area. I know since Cutler was demolished, there used to be basketball courts and tennis courts back to that. The neighborhood could ride their bikes to and use. That's gone now. I think something along those lines would be preferable, maybe a track around the property, walking, jogging track. But as far as some kind of dense development doesn't really fit the, the neighborhood, in my opinion. Traffic-wise, just the whole the feel of the neighborhood would change. I don't think it's feasible. I think a developer who would develop that property would want to probably build houses to, you know, make as much profit as possible and it's probably not going to be, you know, what they might call affordable. So that's my two cents, open space, park-like.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak?
Hi, good evening. My name is John Ledger. I live at one-eighty-one Ocean View Avenue. I've been there since nineteen ninety-six. I was unfortunate that a third of my property was taken back by the, by the town to put in the road that was added for the additional parking on, uh, back at the school. More than happy to pay a dollar for that property back right now, if you guys are interested. But, uh, yeah, I took care of that property for over ten years. I had to move my garden, but, uh, we, we succeeded. But I know a lot of the folks here, I know most of them by their dogs' names more than their own. I have the, uh, the smallest and loudest dog in the neighborhood and I apologize for those folks that, uh, that are aware of Gracie, but, um, I also have one of the best sunsets in the, uh, in the town. I'd hate to see that blocked by, uh, by additional housing, et cetera. Understand the arguments from the folks here with, with affordable housing and, and senior housing. I'm not going to put those guys off, but I do think there's better areas where that can be, uh, can be established. It's a beautiful neighborhood. Like I said, my daughter went to, uh, to Butler, loved it. We, I lived, I moved there because it was a walk-to-school neighborhood. And I just hate to see that, uh, to get any worse than it is now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
C. Antwanek.
Uh, C. Antwanek on, uh, oops, I just throw it once.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear me? Oh, sorry about that. I was turning off. Can you hear us now?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm, I'll start again. My name's Jared Ankoviak. I live at fifty-four Lap Street Court with my family. We moved here about ten years ago. Just outside of New York City from suburban, uh, from basically suburbia. And I guess I'm kind of just parroting some of the things that other people have already said. I'd like to see the property remain as, um, as maybe a park or an open space for the community to utilize. When we moved here ten years ago, we chose the area specifically. It was close to the school. We had a daughter who was one at the time when we moved in. So, and she spent her first two years at Butler before the new, uh, school was set up. So, um, and we chose that, like I said, for the, the area and the park that was nearby. Had we wanted to live near a development, we would have chosen to live near a development. I think like a lot of people have moved here in, in recent times. Also, the, the the travel and the roads in the area. I've spoken to some of the town councilors who have come around during election season and mentioned that the the side roads and the crossroads are not built to handle the traffic that we have today. If you have two people parked on one side of the road and one on the other, you are not going to get a, a car through there. You are not going to get a fire truck through there. And in the event of an emergency, seconds are lives. Also, the close proximity of the property to the Avalonia Land nearby, it's a quick walk into the park. Same thing with the BB Pond area. I think it would be a perfect location for people to come, park their car and then enjoy the, uh, the town spaces, the cross-town trail. You could take that trail all the way to Bluff Point if you wanted to. So, and I think I'm just going to also agree with the, uh, the gentleman who was before me with the low-cost housing. The area does need low-cost housing, but I don't believe this is the area for it. As we all know, Mystic is one of the most expensive places in the town. You want to go downtown. We always joke about the Mystic markup. So having seniors who are on a limited income or low-income housing, their only options are going to be to go down into Mystic where they're going to not be spending any money anyway, because they're going to be outpriced. And, uh, Mystic is, um, not going to be getting any cheaper anytime soon. So those are just my comments. Thank you for my time.
Thank you very much. Last, you know, their hands up on Zoom. Back to the crowd. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in the crowd? I did receive several letters, any letters, I'm sorry to say, but.
Good evening. My name is Dan Gieske. I live at one-thirty-six Ocean View Avenue, right across the street from the SB Butler School property. And I'm also have the honor of being your town councillor. I'm not going to comment on what I think should happen, but I just want to say, uh, thank you for coming out. And as your neighborhood councillor, I thoroughly hear all your opinions at my door and email. This can be located on the town website and, uh, if you have any questions. So thank you, uh, to the top committee for having this hearing today and I wish you all a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure. We have several councillors here tonight who are very interested in what's being said. Anybody else in the crowd would like to speak? I did receive some letters. Any letters we received or emails were posted on our website with the agenda. So those are out there. Received one from Mark Melineak, uh, on Ocean View. Keep the playground areas, ensuring structures built don't add additional strain on the basic systems and infrastructure. Be careful of increased traffic on pedestrians and maintain the charm. A letter from Lydia Steele Andrews, eight lap straight court. Recommended single-level bungalows with one to two bedrooms. Kevin and Amy Buffmac, one-sixty-two Capstan Ave, petition to turn the property into a public park. If the building is to remain vacant, demolish the building and enhance playground and athletic fields, pavilion for summer concerts and other events. Email from Michelle Katie, twenty Walter Fish Ave. Compromise with a split of the property down the middle from the Capstan entry with the road through and then use half, uh, the T-ball field area as a small park and other side for a few houses compatible to houses in the neighborhood. Diane Glombowski, one-forty-three Ocean View Avenue. Proposes if we do decide to sell, make sure it stays within, uh, existing zoning. If you do decide to sell, potentially sell the north part of the site for residential, uh, that may include single unit homes or on individual lots, homes with accessory dwelling units on each lot or cottage community. Focus on the middle missing, uh, housing. Keep southern and half of the town for recreation, including Little League field, playground equipment, small basketball court, et cetera. Let's see. Any development would require substantial drainage improvements, uh, or require a large on-site basin. Hugh Barton, twenty-seven Hartwell Drive, Groton Development of the SB Butler School Site with a balance of housing in an open space for neighborhood use would be ideal. Encourage consideration and development, including two-story townhouses, as this could be pleasant, a pleasant and positive addition to the neighborhood and bring in new people hired by Groton employers. Bob Frink with the Groton Housing Authority, one-forty-four St. Nica Drive. They are interested, as mentioned, submitting a proposal, including housing and other uses such as parks and recreational open space, community center gardens, the type of things that are mentioned at the council may want. Cottage development with single-floor living, um, ten to twenty units possible, depending on what would be, what could be built there. And that's what I have for communications. Sorry, it's very hard to see the list from here.
You don't really draw.
Well, I don't think we have anywhere to do this, like here. So.
Just need down at the, so they saw him at the bottom. Yeah, right there.
Oh, you see him?
Peter Fairbank, next one.
Right there.
Yeah.
Mr. Fairbanks, uh, you still interested in speaking?
Yes, I am. Thank you. My name is Peter Fairbank. I live at sixty Lap Street Court here in Mystic. Like Jared who spoke before me, a couple of speakers ago. We moved here actually about twenty-six years ago. Both of our kids went to SB Butler. And it's actually a co-chair of the PTO there, uh, SB Butler one year with Bruce Flax. We were sad when it closed. But like others, we would like to see that property split up between some regular housing as well as open space. Anything more than that, if you're looking at trying to squeeze in a bunch of development, as other people have said, it's going to lose, you're going to lose the aesthetic. And we don't have the infrastructure to support that. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yeah, last call. If not, we'll close out the public comments. Again, I really thank everyone for, and you're welcome, of course, to stay, but I really thank everyone for their comments. It's really truly appreciated and I'm sure all of us as well as the council will take them to kind of start. Thank you. Uh, moving into the next section, which is discussion of SB Butler, and we're still, again, very early stages. We're not just still at the gathering information stage. Kind of go around the table and any information they want to report that they found, I'm considering the property.
Thanks. So I did speak with our appraisal firm and they, uh, will start the appraisal, appraisal process soon. They were working on updates to the other two school properties first. So I think it'll probably be a couple to a few months before we have an appraisal. Sorry. So, uh, we've ordered an appraisal on the property, but it'll be a few months before we have it.
Are you asking for a comment specific to the questions?
No, at this point, we're still gathering information. We had some tasks at the last, at the end of the last meeting appraisal. Let me start doing some initial title search, uh, searches, that type of thing. Is there anything, uh, information-wise that you found that you'd like to report?
I do not at this time, but I see.
Um, I think we talked about if there was an A two survey, uh, prepared for this property, there was, there's not one. There was a site plan for the school and it was built in the nineteen fifty-three. We do have that. My surveyor has done some preliminary research out there and found that, you know, the fences that are out there now are pretty much right on the property lines. So, you know, if we want to, uh, proceed with an A two survey, we can certainly do that. Then we also need to, um, have the town attorney start a title search. You know, this deed, or this property was taken through a court judgment. So we really need to have, uh, this research by the town attorney.
And just to mention, just because there's a court judgment does not mean it's prohibited from, like it was mentioned about knowing gardens that actually was able to sell. It just wasn't chosen to sell. Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Uh, just to mention, um, he'd mentioned that, uh, that it was taken through court action. So definitely needed a town attorney to review that. Um, that was similar to knowing gardens. However, that was able to be resold. The council just chose not to. Just because it was taken through court action, unless there's a reverter clause, does not mean it would not be sellable. So we're still at early stages of looking at it.
I have nothing. Nope.
Yeah, my is in terms of the scheduled project, a project flow on what the community and we could expect on timing. If, if the appraisal is a couple of months, then you get the, uh, you know, the legal reviews. How, how long would it be? When would we next meet to, to look at that input and have a discussion?
Uh, I think one of the most critical steps right now is the, uh, the title search. Having that done by the attorney, I'm going to order that immediately. About the earliest we ever get those is about a month, could take two months, um, which could kind of time out with the, the appraisal. And as far as we know, we've not had a phase one correct. However, until we know there's not titles constraints, I think hold off on the, on, uh, anything environmental-wise is the next step. So, so right now we're going to order title searches and continue on the appraisal. And once we have those back, which will be one to two months, then we'll schedule another meeting. We will, we'll put it out on social media early and councillors, I'm sure will help, uh, get the word out also. So at that point, that's all we have right now. We had to gather all the information before we can continue on with discussion. So again, thank you very much for being here. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Deb Jones, second by John Reiner, all in favor of adjourn.
Hi.
Okay, adjourn unanimously at six thirteen PM.